This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, December the 13th, 2022. I'd like to welcome you this evening. We've got a full house and a full agenda, and thank you for being with us this evening. We will proceed on through the agenda this evening, but we've got some special recommendations to do and some other things along with business. We will appreciate your indulgence as we move through these items. I'll ask Councilman Coryon Booker, if he would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation for council. If you would like, you may join us by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father God, we thank you for tonight, Father, for letting us all come here together as one body to talk about matters of the city. Heavenly Father, Lord, we ask you just to be with us as we make these decisions. Let them be fair and equitable to everyone across the city of Greer, Father. Lord, we ask you to bless all the special recognitions that we have tonight, some that we hate to see move on, but we know that they'll be sticking around for much longer. Lord, we ask you just to bless the health of those that are here and the ones across our great city. Be with us during the special time as we celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ, Father. Lord, we thank you for everything that you're doing for the city of Greer. Continue to bless us, continue to be with us in everything that we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
So normally at this time, we set aside time for public forum. Public forum is a time that we offer for our residents to come and address council with items that are pertinent to the agenda. Mr. Schinkel is joining us this evening in Ms. Duncan's place, and so I'm going to go ahead and ask her forgiveness for calling her Ms. Duncan at some point during this meeting, because I'm so used to doing that, but we will do our best to recognize you appropriately. So thank you for filling in on short notice tonight. We didn't have anybody to sign up for public forum, I don't think, is that correct? And so we will move forward with the minutes of the meeting council. The minutes of our council meeting from November the 22nd, 2022 are contained in your packet. I'll entertain a motion if they be received. Have a motion in a second. Any items of the note for the clerk? Hearing none. Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Alber.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Folks, as we move on to special recognitions, I want to start our special recognitions by recognizing our staff. This is the last meeting of the regularly scheduled meeting that we will hold this year, and for those that have helped us out through the course of the year, Ms. Duncan, who is our clerk normally would be here, but is prevented from being here this evening, but Mr. Schinkel and others have filled in for her. We thank you for what you've done to help assist us in that regard, certainly our administrator, our IT department, and all of the departments that appear here on a regular basis for the time that they spend in the evening away from home and family sometimes to be a part of our meetings. We truly appreciate it and thank you for that consideration during the year, as well to our council. We know that from time to time, there are obligations that prevent us from being here, but for your diligence this year, thank you as well as we wrap the year up with what typically is a little longer meeting than normal, but gives us an opportunity to attend to some business we wouldn't normally otherwise be able to get to. We do have a number of special recognitions this evening, both from some citizens and also some retirements and employee recognitions. Then we will move after that to a petitioner, and I'll explain a little bit more about what a petitioner is, but we will also give time after the special recognitions for those that choose or wish to leave the meeting and to hopefully go downtown Greer and spend some money for dinner or something else. We'll let you go do that, encourage you to go do that, so we'll give you a few minutes to leave the room. But you're welcome at any of our meetings, and we're always glad to have you. And so with that, I am going to recognize some folks. And Mr. Dumas, you may have to help me with these. One of the differences between good cities and towns and great cities and towns are those folks that give up their time and of themselves and of their businesses to help a city. And as we come to the end of the year, there are some folks that I would like to recognize in a very special way for the time and commitment that they have given to the city of Greer. I'm not exactly sure how to recognize these people. Certainly, they are advocates for the city of Greer. Certainly, they are champions for the city of Greer. In some cases, they've been an elected official that represents the area of the city of Greer. But I guess the most appropriate way for me to recognize these folks is as a friend, and it is these friends of the city of Greer that I think makes this town so special. And I've got several of these that I want to give away tonight, and each person that we are going to recognize this evening is special to this city in their own unique way. And I can't think of a better way to start this off than to recognize Ms. Rita Allison. So Ms. Rita Allison, would come to the front, please. Rita, this key to the city serves as a token of sincere appreciation from Mayor Rick Daner and the Greer City Council to Rita Allison for her tireless service to residents of District 36, particularly in support of children and seniors, as a member of the Spartanburg County District 5 School Board from 1986 to 1992, and as a member of the South Carolina House of Representatives from 1993 to 2002, and again from 2009 until 2022, presented this day, December 13th, 2022. This key to the city is for Ms. Rita Allison. Join me in the round of applause.
I just told the mayor it's the first key I've ever gotten, so this is even more special from the city of Greer. The friend and I who came here tonight rode around in the city of Greer because we were early, and I want to thank you and your council and all of those men and women standing in the back who served this city to say, you are a jewel in the crown of South Carolina. You have done a wonderful job to bring this city to the furation that it is and the excellence that it is. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for letting me stand on your shoulders and represent you, and thank you for what you do every day. Amen.
Thank you. Rita obviously was part of the Spartanburg delegation, but also in combination with the Greenville delegation, and if there was everything that we needed to get done, particularly if it was roads or education, I knew it only took one phone call, and thank you for all that you've done for us. So I need two of my buddies to come up here. I need Joe Dill and Joel Dill to come up front, please. They don't typically go in and wear without each other, but we're going to recognize a couple of them tonight. Joel is quick to ask if you've got a card on you, and that always means a business card, and how many of mine have you got?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, yes. You have hundreds of my cards at your house. But we're going to recognize your daddy first, okay? And this is a key to the city that says, "For embodying the spirit of service above self and rendering dedicated and effective representation to residents of District 17 for 24 years on the Greenville County Council and 12 years on the Greenville County School Board. Let this key serve as a lasting token of sincere appreciation from Mayor Rick Daner and the Greer City Council to Joe Dill." And let's give this to him with a round of applause. What do you say? Now then, we've got one more thing to do. You want to do one more thing?
Yeah.
All right. This is a proclamation, and it's from the City of Greer Council, and it's to Joel Dill. And it says, "We hereby make you an honorary citizen of the city of Greer." It says, "Joel Dill's heart is full of love for his family, his faith, and Greenville County, and he's served as the right-hand man for his father, Greenville County Councilman Joe Dill, during the latter's 30 years of public service. And whereas in addition to that role as a trusted confidant and advisor, he has been and remains, in the words of his father, 'a perfect son and a blessing to me every day.' Now therefore, the mayor, myself, and the city council recognize Joel Dill for his dedication to the community that is blessed by his presence and proclaim him to be an honorary citizen of the city of Greer, stamped today, December the 13th, 2022." And so this is your proclamation, making you an honorary citizen, and this is your key to the city. So whenever you need to get in, you just use that key right there, okay? All right. Listen, I think there's just not words to express how much we appreciate this. We love you. And we love y'all. I remember when we were out there, he had a car. And Lee was a teenager. He was a peer tutor for Joel at Greer High School. You've got some great people on this council, no doubt about it. That's the reason when you ride down the street, you can be proud. Look at that big old key. See, you don't need a car now, you got a key. Thank y'all. Appreciate you. Come on.
He has to follow that.
Somebody was going to have to. We couldn't dare get everything on a plaque that Randy Jennings has done for this city. We just can't begin to list everything that Randy does. I don't know of a time, and we've got to have the police department standing back there, that the police chief or the fire chief or myself have called him and asked him to help with an event that we were having that involved the city in some form or fashion that Randy hadn't just said, yes, no questions asked, yes. And it's been invaluable to us, and I want to recognize Randy tonight. Says, "Let this key serve as a token of sincere appreciation from Mayor Rick Daner and the Greer City Council of Randy Jennings for his longtime generous," and I would underline "generous," "support of the city of Greer and its employees, and his unending desire as a preeminent leader in the business community to help make this community the best place it can be. And you've done that for us, Randy. We want to recognize you. Join me in a round of applause. I'm in the retarded city of Greer, and very happy to have started my first business here and couldn't have happened in a better place, and I sure appreciate everything. Thank you. He's fed us, and he's jumped into a whole new world as developer. He is now a downtown, or has been a downtown developer in terms of residents and businesses as well, too, and we thank him for that role. I haven't seen you come in. Is Tom Mills here?
There he is.
There you are. I don't know how I missed you. Come on, Tom. Come on up here.
I want to take a credit card.
Tom is one of those guys that...
Careful.
He's like the goat man. He does more for this city than we could ever imagine, and he's not out in front of the parade, and I think he likes it that way. He appreciates it that way. But he does more for this city than most people realize, and for those of us that are downtown early and downtown late and see him speaking to folks all over this town and for the pride that he takes in this town and the investment that he has put into this town, we want to recognize him tonight. And it says, "This key serves as a token of sincere appreciation from Mayor Rick Daner and the Greer City Council to Tom Mills for his devoted public service, pride, and love of his community, serving as ambassador to visitors to the city, and his unwavering support for our veterans and first responders, presented this day, December 13th, 2022." Thank you, Randy.
I won't say a word, but I definitely want this. These are the coolest things ever. Steve Owens told me it won't unlock anything, want to open anything, but I will have to say, thanks, Steve, for pushing this. I wish you could see. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Several. Yeah, I don't have my agenda, paper agenda.
It's amazing. Somebody said, "How many people quit?" I said, "Well, not many." We are growing, and we are hiring to accommodate that growth, and 101 new employees this year. But inevitably, there are those folks that reach milestones in their career and have the opportunity to retire and maybe pursue another career and/or just retire. And we've got three such individuals this evening that will be retiring from the city of Greer, and I'm going to ask all three of them if they will come up, and we will get a picture. We've got something to give you that is a small token of appreciation for what you've done for the city, and so I would like to ask Stephen Anderson, if he would, to come to the front, please, sir. This is a certificate of appreciation, Stephen. It says, "Congratulations upon your retirement from the city of Greer, presented in appreciation of 24 years and eight months of dedicated service to the city of Greer, March 5th, 1998 to December 12th, 2022, presented to Stephen B. Anderson." Join me in a round of applause. I'll have a small gift there for you to take with you. One of his running buddies, and I'm going to ask Randall Ballinger to come up front.
Mr. Mayor Thomas, first been prayed, it's ready by now.
Should we vote on the key, taking it back or something? I'm going to keep this straightforward, because when y'all's buddy Jeff Smith came up here and retired, I got wound up pretty bad, and I'm not going to let it happen again. That doesn't mean that I like you any less. I'm just going to try and make it through if I can, because you guys have been here a long time, and I used to see y'all just about every day when I was downtown working. It says, "This is an appreciation, this certificate is an appreciation that we want to award to Randall Ballinger. Congratulations upon your retirement from the city of Greer, presented in appreciation of 25 years, four months of dedicated service to the city of Greer, July the 24th, 1997 to January 5th, 2023, presented this day to Randall Ballinger." Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. You know, I want to add, not only has Randall served us, you have served our country during that time as well, too, and you are the 35 years, and you are the...
Sergeant Major of a Transportation Battalion.
Sergeant Major of the...
1050 Transportation Battalion for the entire state of South Carolina.
And that's worth a round of applause.
I like to say this, so part of being in the National Guard is the city that supports you, and the chief and captain and all the people. When you leave, somebody's got to do the work, and I've never heard anybody say anything about deployments or anything like that. So the city of Greer is a great place to work. For you young guys in the back, hang in there. I promise you, you'll never make any less than you're making today. It only gets better.
And this last one, this for Suzette. She's still got her crown on. I was going to say, she took her crown off. Suzette Ashley. I went to a little drop-in for her today, and she had a crown on, and one of her coworkers said she wore that every day. Did it while I'm here? I have a crown on. This is a certificate of appreciation that says, "Congratulations upon your retirement from the city of Greer, presented in appreciation of 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Greer, December 31st, 1998 to December 30th, 2022, to Suzette Ashley." Join me in a round of applause. All right, we'll get some pictures, and then if family, does family want to come up for some pictures? Anybody? All righty. This is something we do on a fairly regular basis, and I'm always happy to do this, because this is celebrating and recognizing service with the city. And we had a breakfast not too long ago and got to recognize those folks. We had everything from just a month or two to, I won't call her name, it's 30-plus...
30-pound years.
Yeah, 30-plus years. So all over the board in terms of length of service. So this is a resolution recognizing and commending the city of Greer employees. Whereas the city of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and we'll have you up front here in just a minute. Let me read these names. Jennifer Bowden with the Police Department for five years. Carlos Rodriguez served with the Police Department for five years. Thomas Waters has spent five years with the Police Department. Ruthie Helms has served in the Building and Development Standards Department for 10 years. Heather Smith has served in the Administration Department for 10 years. Jordan Williams has served in the Police Department for 10 years, and Lamar Whitman has served in the Public Services Department for 30 years. And whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now let it therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a duly assembled meeting, wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it therefore further resolved that the city of Greer hereby reward these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay approved this 13th day of December 20... this 13th day of December 2022. Round of applause for all of those folks. If you would, come forward, Thomas Waters.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Boden. Carlos Rodriguez.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Jordan Williams. Last but not least, Ruthie Helms.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Again. So we will pause for just a moment as... Before we start the rest of our session this evening, if we have those folks that would like to slip out at this point. All right, counsel, we've got a ways to go this evening, so let's resume our meeting. I mentioned earlier in the evening that we set aside time for public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for us to entertain the requests or comments from citizens that have an interest in something that is on the agenda. The other way to appear before counsel is to be a petitioner. And a petitioner can ask for the opportunity to come and speak to counsel. Petitioners bring something to our attention as a general rule that we may or may not be aware of, or they have a request about. The council considers the petitioner's request. We will not take any action tonight, but gives them an opportunity to bring before counsel something that we may want to think about for future action. This evening, we have premier pedal parties that are going to come before us to discuss an issue that is of importance to them. Jennifer Middleton and Jenny Deveraux are here, and I'll ask them to come to the podium. And if you would, if you will just state your name as a matter of record, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. My name's Jennifer Middleton, and excuse Jenny's absence. She was here briefly, but had to go actually drive a ride tonight, so she had to take off. But I thank you all for having me and giving me the opportunity. We are a 14-passenger party bike business. We did explore the idea here in Greer back in March when we were thinking about starting this business. And Jenny and I have been friends for 18-plus years, and we just decided we wanted to bring a little bit of fun to the upstate. So when we did discuss it, we talked with multiple people in the city and about the ordinances with drinking on the bike. And we basically do a tour for about an hour and a half, and that includes a 30-minute stop where people can get off and walk around, grab a drink, get a little bite to eat, ice cream or whatever they like from the local businesses, and then we finish our ride off. And we intentionally purchased the bike. We had it custom-built without the big barrel on the front. We didn't call it a beer bike, a pub sickle, you know, anything that had any kind of drinking related because we were aware of the ordinances in Greer. And we thought, this will just be fun. We don't need people to drink on the bike. And a major issue that we've come across is that a lot of people want to drink on the bike, and they actually just will say, we'll come when you can drink on the bike. So something that we would like to ask is, how can we lawfully do the drinking on the bike? We have explored some different options, as such as, well, Hendersonville is the closest party bike to our area. And we did go there and kind of observe how they handle things there. When you get on their bike, they do allow the bring your own alcohol. It's either beer or wine only. And they check everyone's IDs, and then, you know, they hand out the drinks to people. They have them in their cooler. And we thought that that was an excellent idea. So the driver, because the driver is separate from the people who pedal the bike. The people pedaling the bike do propel the bike, but the driver is in control. She does the steering. She handles the blinkers and the lights and everything else up front and the brakes. And so the people pedaling the bike help to propel it, but it also has an assistant motor that kind of helps with hills and takeoffs. So anyway, the driver would be able to check everyone's IDs when they got on, collect all their beverages, put them in our cooler, which we already have for non-alcoholic beverages now, and then give everyone out their drinks. And then they could collect them all back when we make our stop. People can still get off and go and explore the local businesses. And then if they have a second drink that they want to have when they get back on the bike, then they could have their drinks handed out then, and then they would all be collected before they get off the bike for the end of the ride. So this would be, this would be something that would be more controlled than just having open containers out in the streets. And the passengers, as I mentioned, they don't actually control the driving or control of the bike at all, other than they can help to give propelling power. And the driver herself is completely separate from them up in the front of the bike. So I do have some flyers if anybody wants to take a look. If you're not familiar with the bike, it has a picture, and this is basically how we market it with the scavenger hunts. We do like a kind of a history of different areas around Greer when we go out on Sundays and try and target more of like the family. It's a daytime ride. And then the Thursday, Friday, Saturday rides are more evening rides. And they include music bingo on Thursday. So it's not just that we want people to come to ride the bike to drink. We want them to explore the city of Greer. And we've had multiple people who have even been on the bike who live in the area and didn't know a lot of the things that we bring to their attention while they're riding the bike on the scavenger hunt. I mean, some people don't even know that Blue Ridge has a rooftop bar, that, you know, you can go in there and grab some shrimp and grits. So it's a really good way for us to not only bring attention to other businesses around, but also just to see like the beautiful sights of Greer. And so I think that the more people we can draw in, the better.
If you'll leave the flyers with the clerks, you can distribute them to the council via their mailboxes, and we will consider your request.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, your report is next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. For me to counsel, and I think on behalf of the citizens, by way of recognition, we do as a staff, recognize the effort that you as counsel put in, and not only that, the support that you provide, me and all of our departments, as we go about doing the business of a city that's growing and is as robust as the city of Greer is. So from the city staff and me, thank you for all that you do. Also, personally, thank you to Steve Anderson. Actually, I met Steve when he was, gosh, this was before my, when my wife and I were dating. She was teaching at Riverside, where he's the SRO. So I met Steve before working for the city of Greer was a glimmer in my eye. And I won't say that I was a senior in high school when he started there, but I'll say it anyway because I just did. But anyway, but to Suzette and Randall and Steve and everybody else, just thank you so much. Between the three of them, that's 75 years of service to this community. So thank you so much. Just an update real quick. Building and Development Services, effective January 1st of 2023, the city of Greer and the state of South Carolina will be enforcing the new 2021 International Building Codes and the 2020 National Electric Code with state amendments. Between the two of them, there are somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,500 code changes. I think Ruthie has memorized them all. But if anybody has any questions, certainly visit thecityofgreer.org for further information and to find any additional information on the South Carolina Building Codes Council website. Again, loose leaf collection is underway now through February 3rd. So as you rake, get it out there to the edge of the street, and we're going to get it up. And if you have any questions about when, it's your turn to get it up. You can go to thecityofgreer.org and check the calendar and map to identify your neighborhood's assigned leaf collection date. By way of reminder, the city of Greer offices are closed Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, the 26th, and Monday, the 2nd of 2023, in observance of Christmas and New Year's. But obviously, public safety divisions will operate as regularly scheduled. And before I end, I would ask Chief Hamby to come to the podium. He has an announcement that he would like to make on behalf of the police department.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayorman, for yielding a minute or two of your time. I want to share some information with city council and update you on some news that we received pretty recently. A little background information, the South Carolina Law Enforcement Officers Association, also known as SCLEO, holds an annual awards ceremony in which they give the following awards. The SCANA Crime Prevention Award, the Officer of the Year Award, Citizen of the Year Award, and the Santee Cooper Excellence in Law Enforcement Award. The Santee Cooper Excellence in Law Enforcement Award is given to one law enforcement agency each year in South Carolina for their outstanding performance with regards to effort, innovative service to the community, efficiency, and results. So I'm happy to share with you that the 2022 SCLEO Excellence in Law Enforcement Award was given to Greer Police Department for this year. So with that, I would give a little bit of criteria that was considered for this award. This is a very prestigious award that is given to, as I said, one agency for the entire state. The criteria require contributions of effort that span across the agency, not just one person or a small group. So our submission for this award was based on some of these programs, and I'd like to share just as a reminder of some of these things that were accomplished in 2022. Our Project Safe Neighborhoods program that addresses gun violence, our Citizen Police Academy, our summer youth camp, Coffee with a Cop programs, Popsicles with a Cop, Community Roll Calls, Stuff a Cruiser, School Supply Drive, the Cops and Gobblers Thanksgiving Meal Delivery, Casting with a Cop, Gang Resistance Education and Training, or the GREAT program, as it was a 10-week program in which 112 5th graders graduated about a week ago. Goals on the Run, we've had 35 graduates from Crestview Elementary during 2022. Cops for Tots, we finished that on Saturday. We had 300 kids come through. We had National Night Out. We held a youth summit against youth violence, and we established the minority scholarships to North Greenville and Greenville Tech. So I wanted to share this, oh, by the way, all this was accomplished in a year in which we are on track to have a 26% increase in calls for service. So we will be eclipsing above 40,000 calls for service this year. Amazing increase of business on our end, and we were still able to accomplish all of these programs. So I just wanted to express my thanks to the mayor and council and Mr. Mayorman because it's pretty expensive to run a good police department, and even more expensive to run a great police department, and that's exactly what I think we have here. This does take a team effort, and counsel, Mr. Mayorman, the mayor, you're all part of our team. So you're actually part of receiving this award is the way I look at it because of the support you provide with the budgeting and all the other resources, but all just the moral support you provide to our people. So I'm here to say thank you and just let you know about the great return on your investment. We appreciate your help. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks. I just want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Counsel, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. First of which this evening is Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Phil Tyler's term expires 12/31/2022, and Reno Deaton's term expires 12/31/2022. New or additional information regarding the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, Mr. Mayorman?
It's my understanding that both Mr. Tyler and Mr. Deaton are willing to continue serving.
Counsel comes with advisement that they are willing to serve another term. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So... Motion, second. Any question in regards to those appointments? Comments? Hearing on Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert. Mayor Danner.
Yes. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, George McCall's term expires 12/31/2022. Any direction in that regard, Ms. Helms?
It is my understanding that Mr. McCall is willing to serve, continue serving another term.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved in Mr. McCall, has served the city how long? I mean, he's been on this board for a little long.
Yeah, well over 20 years, sir.
Great. We appreciate his service as well, too. Motion, second.
Second.
Motion, second. Floor is open for any discussion or questions in that regard. Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert. Mayor Danner.
Yes. Counsel, excuse me. Counsel, we've been unable to get in touch with Mr. Baldwin. We will hold that one over and continue to try and reach out to him. Greer Development Corporation Board of Directors, Kevin Duncan's term expires 12/31/2022. New or additional information in that regard, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Duncan is willing to serve another term.
I'll entertain a motion to receive. Second. Motion, second. Floor is open for discussion. Another good one. Another good one. Comments? Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert. Mayor Danner.
Yes. Counsel, as you are aware, there is an opening in the Housing Authority by the city of Greer for the Board of Commissioners there with the Housing Authority. Julie Barnes's term has expired. We were recently given direction from the city attorney that the nominee that came before us, it was a non-resident, it was his opinion that that was germane to the question of service there, as was his service on another board. So we will await a recommendation from the Housing Authority at a later date. With that, then, we'll move to matters of old business. First of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 2-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Kathy Smith and James Allen Smith III located at 812 Harvey Road by 100% petition, and to establish zoning classification of DERD for said property. Ms. Cotty.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Typically, I don't give an update for second reading, but... Typically, I don't give an update for second reading, but this first came before the board back in March, so it's been quite a while. So I just wanted to give a quick reminder. This is a portion of a property on Harvey Road. They are, this is an aerial of the site. This is the current zoning map. This is the future land use map and current street view. They are proposing up to 79 single-family attached units, 3.4 acres of passive and active common space. They do have kind of a walking trail and pocket park. And then, so City Council did approve on first reading back on March 8th, 2022. Staff then recommended approval to Planning Commission. They held a public hearing on March 21st of 2022, and they also recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive number, Ordinance Number 2-2022.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Why did it take so long to come back?
I'm not quite certain. I know with annexations now with development agreements that are associated, and this developer wanted to do some due diligence before they closed on the property. So they did go ahead and go through several rounds of civil review first before wanting to go ahead and go through second reading, and then they are slated for final development plan at Planning Commission next Monday as well.
A show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Anything you would like to add to that explanation, sir?
No, sir, she said.
Okay, thank you. Others? Council, others? Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 3-2022. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement binding between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and Harvey Development LLC with respect to infrastructure improvements in the City of Greer and other matters related thereto. Any new or additional information? Ms. Cotty?
No, this is just related to the ordinance that was just heard. It's the development agreement for that annexation.
I'll entertain a motion to receive final reading of Ordinance Number 3-2022.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, let's move to the third item, which is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 65-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by Allenstein located on East Gap Creek Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to Ordinance Number 65-2022?
Yes. Planning Commission held a public hearing earlier this month and recommended approval.
Comes with approval from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, we move to the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 68-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by the City of Greer located at 137 Rogers Circle by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of OD for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to Ordinance Number 68-2022?
Planning Commission held a public hearing for this case as well and recommended approval.
Comes from staff with a recommendation of approval. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Second and final reading of Ordinance Number 69-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by the City of Greer located on Country Club Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R20% property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to Ordinance Number 69-2022?
Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval.
Council comes with a recommendation from approval from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive Ordinance Number 69-2022 for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, let's move to the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 70-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by the City of Greer located on Palmetto Drive by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification for R20 for said property. Ms. Cotty.
Planning Commission also held a public hearing for this case and recommended approval.
Ordinance Number 70-2022 comes with an approval from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Is this just a vacant lot?
It is. It has easements that provide, I believe, water to the golf course.
Yeah, oddly enough, it's an adjacent residential lot that I believe serves for irrigation purposes. There's a pump on there.
It was just never developed?
Just never developed, and it was part of the golf course purchase for utilities, effectively is what it is, but it was never annexed. We're just cleaning all that up.
Okay, is that how it's able to connect into the city?
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
I got it. I thought it was something somewhere where it connected to something.
Comments? Further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, second and final reading of Ordinance Number 71-2022, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of development agreement binding between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and Devine Group LLC, or its assigns with respect to capital improvements of the City of Greer and other matters related thereto. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to Ordinance Number 71-2022?
I do not have any updates. This is just related to Ordinance Number 65 that was recently voted on.
With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, final item of old business is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 72-2022. This is an ordinance to redistrict the six single-member election districts for the election of the city council members based on the 2020 decennial census. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for discussion.
Mayor, you and I have been through this several times. We went from fairly primitive the first time to fairly advanced one of these last times. We had the advantage of using software, and that seemed to me to be the most expeditious way to do it. Unfortunately, the early information, that I had anyway, was not that readable. And as I have torn into it, it appears that this particular iteration violates one of the most important parts of redistricting. It separates traditional neighborhoods. In my case, I didn't look that closely at other neighborhoods, but that'll be the reason that I vote against it. It has divided several areas that have been decades in being in the same neighborhoods. It'll also disenfranchise several hundred people. The last time they will have voted for a councilman would be 2019. They won't vote again until 2025. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote against it.
I'm assuming that the, because one of the things Mr. Bettis brought up, I received some of his district, which is part of the Greer Mill community. And that really does break up a community that's been there forever.
Others?
The only thing I know is that during the last census that they did, my subdivision got broken up, which I felt like the subdivision, you know, should have really stayed intact. But anyway, it passed with it being separated, and you go in and this side, you turn into the subdivision, this side over here is five, this side over here is one, and it goes down around the curve and staying on that side of the road and around in Colosseum and back around and kind of separates the streets between six and one. So I did object to it at that time. But it was done, and that was many years ago to whatever it is now. Yeah.
That's resolved voting precincts, is that right? How they have to divide it, not just roads and subdivisions?
Census blocks.
Census blocks.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think that's important to remember here, and while I am certainly sympathetic to the issues that have been raised at this table and know they are legitimate, we also have to realize that as one of the fastest-growing cities in South Carolina over the last decade, let alone over the last two or three years, five years, inevitably, this task grows more and more difficult. And as Mr. Bettis pointed out, it has become essentially entirely automated at this point, and it's hard enough to do when you're trying to do it to be sensitive to districts, but it becomes even harder when you become sensitive to leaving council members in the district, primary district that they have served. And as y'all are aware, in a town this size, at least in regards to where most of us live, it does add an extra layer of insight and consideration to the method that it is done. And while I understand that oftentimes there are communities and even streets in some cases that get divided, I think, on the whole without some legitimate concern about that, it is a good draw and a fair draw based on where we are as a city at this point in time. So just a bit of balance to what otherwise is some of the problems with it, but I think they've done a fairly good job.
Others? Questions or comments in regards to the Ordinance 72-2022? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
No.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Council, it occurred to me as we went through old business, we have at least approved 71, well, not necessarily 71 ordinances, but a lot of ordinances involving annexations this year, and I'm not exactly sure what that number is, but it is a big number for sure. You know, we have averaged quite a number through the year and indicates some of what we're just sitting here talking about. And I know from my meetings with the Municipal Association, on most nights, when we are approving anywhere from 5 to 7 here just in one evening of second readings of these, there are many cities that would love to have that many in a year's time. So hats off to our staff and to this council for being attuned to that process and creating an environment that those folks that are developing this area and have other places they can choose from, choosing the City of Greer to offer their product to our growing residency. With that, then, we'll move to new business. First item before us tonight in new business is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 23-2022. This is a resolution pursuant to Section 4-1-170(c) Code of Law, South Carolina, 1976, as amending consenting to placement of certain properties within the corporate limits of the City of Greer and enjoying industrial and business park of Spartanburg and Cherokee Counties. We welcome Mr. Reno Deaton, the Executive Director of the Greer Development Court, this evening for explanation.
Mayor, Council, good evening, and thank you. The request this evening to place this parcel in a multi-county industrial park, consistent with all of the incentive agreements that we have the good fortune to hear over the years. This is part of the Becknell Development off Freeman Farm Road. There are a number of benefits for multi-county industrial park development. The one that I like to highlight is the enhancement of the jobs development tax credit, which actually is an encouragement for companies to create jobs at a wage threshold of at least the county average. I'd also like to recognize a couple of members of the development team from Becknell here this evening with us and publicly thank them for their investment in the City of Greer and all the good things they've done for us. Happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
Indeed. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion of receive Resolution Number 23-2022.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
I just wanted to say something. Does anybody read the resolution? Because Reno must work for like the CIA. Because he says a whole lot without saying anything in the resolution. But I got you. Reno, I love you. I'm sorry about that.
It's all about the codename.
Yeah, the codename, that's right.
Others? Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel.
Mr. Arrowhead.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all as well, too, for what you're doing in terms of development. Thank you. Second item before us this evening is the first reading of Ordinance Number 73-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by True North Properties LLC located at 101 Clayton Street from RM 12 to R5. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, thank you. This is a rezoning request for one property. It's about 0.33 acres. This is an aerial view of the property. It is on Clayton Street. This is a current zoning map. This is the future land use map. It is in a traditional neighborhood. And then this is a current street view. Surrounding uses are residential. This neighborhood does have kind of a mix of duplexes and single family. It's adjacent to residential multifamily and also a mix of OD office uses. So staff did recommend approval. Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 21st and also recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? No one indicated. So I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 73-2022. And a second. Floor's open for discussion.
The intent is to create one single-family lot?
So it would be to rezone to R5 so that they could subdivide from one lot into two. And there is one existing single-family home, so it would create one adjacent.
Okay, right, right. So they're gonna have, there's already an existing home on the lot, they'll subdivide that and then they, gotcha.
Correct, yes.
Others? Comments? Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Council wants to move to item number three, the first reading of ordinance number 74-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by Brian Fowler, Greg Taylor, and et cetera custodian FBO Gregory Taylor IRA located on Wildwood Drive from R5 to DRD. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please.
Sure, thank you. This is a rezoning request for three properties. They actually front Main. And they the, let me just get through, get to the site plan. But they are requesting to do six attached units, again, fronting Main. They would have access off a private drive off Wildwood. This is current zoning map. Again, it's currently R5, which is our smallest lot, single-family, adjacent to RM1. And then the C3 is the pink color that you see. There's an existing existing dentistry office located there. This is the future land use map. It is located in traditional neighborhood adjacent to suburban commercial. And then here is a current street view. The existing home that you see would be demolished. And then this is the proposed site plan that goes with the DRD showing the six, one kind of unit or one building set, but with six attached units. Again, they would connect pedestrian-wise to Highway 14 or Main, and then the main drive access would be private off of Wildwood Drive. As far as statement of intent, this one's pretty simple because it is so small. But they will be required to have the typical building materials that we require. And we did put in additional requirement that both the side and rear facades would need to have accent materials or other architectural features such as shutters, just because this is a highly traveled corridor. So I'm happy to answer any, oh, sorry. Staff did recommend approval. We did feel it's consistent with the future land use map and existing kind of zoning and existing uses in the area. Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 21st, and they also recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, you may, this may have been covered by, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So moved. Thank you. Are you available for questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Albert?
Okay.
Oh, well, let's go ahead. Yeah, for the purpose of discussion, we probably should. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 74-2022.
So moved.
And a second. Second. The floor's yours, Ms. Albert.
Okay. I was just gonna ask about the parking. I mean, will it be pulling out on Highway 14 from each individual unit? Or is that what the private drive in the back is?
Exactly. The private drive will access the driveway in the back. So they will have a driveway into each individual unit. And the frontage is only a sidewalk connection to the existing sidewalk on North Main. There will be no curb cuts on North Main.
Okay, bet it.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense.
Others?
Can you explain a little bit of the, it says fiber, hardy board or vinyl on the statement of intent? Is it one or the other they can use and then access accents along the?
Yes.
Highway 14 and then on the Wildwood?
Yes.
Drive? What about the other side coming up 14?
So sides and rear. So typically, we only require accents on the front facade, but in this case, we did require them on the sides and the rear.
So it'll be all the way around?
All, all four sides, yep.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Council item number four, first reading of ordinance number 75-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Chandler at Memorial Holdings LLC located on Chandler Road from C3 to RM2. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. This is a rezoning request for one parcel. This is the aerial view. It is located on Chandler. I'm gonna skip to zoning because I think that's a little easier to explain what's gonna happen. So this small piece, it's .76 acres, the pink that you see highlighted in red, they are requesting to rezone to RM2, which is that brown color that you see. And they would be combining the three parcels if this does get rezoned with the intent to develop a small apartment complex with, I believe, 82 units. So they are just requesting the the small .76 combined, it's a little under six and a half acres total. This is the future land use map. It is suburban commercial near traditional neighborhood and current street view of the property. It is close to an assisted living facility, various residential, there's also a school nearby, and then RM2 zoning that is vacant. Staff did recommend approval to Planning Commission. They held a public hearing on November 21st, and they also recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? You available for questions? If they arise, thank you. Comes with a recommendation for approval, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Second. Floor's open for discussion.
Do we know yet at this point where the access to traffic will be?
We do not. We do not have a site plan at this point. They will be required to do a traffic impact analysis if and when they get to the point of site development plan.
There is a significant grade change between Memorial Drive Extension and Chandler Road right there. I mean, this parcel that you're trying to bring in is relatively flat, but then it drops off almost into a ravine there and then climbing back up to Memorial Drive Extension. I mean, what what is it that we require as far as, you know, grading is concerned or, you know, how much dirt comes in or, you know, where, what's that process like?
Honestly, I would not be the one to review that. That would be up to our stormwater engineer and our building department would also do that. I know they require soil compaction testing and reports for that. Ms. Helms may be better to address that. But I don't know if if the applicant, I know they've consulted an engineer for kind of initial due diligence. They may be better to address that question.
Would you all like to help us with that? Because I think it's a legitimate concern for those of us that have seen it without kudzu on it. So if you'll come to the podium, please, it'd be helpful. And if you'll state your name and who you were with as a matter of the record, please.
Mr. Chairman and Council, my name's Chip Fogelman. I'm with Arbor Land Design. And we've done just a preliminary site plan. I'll ask for Mr. Bettis. Our intent is to, well, make sure I say the right road name. Our intent right now is to exit on Chandler Road. And and we've got a traffic study essentially underway. I talked to the fellow today, and we should have results of that back by the first of the sometime first of January. So we've got that moving. The grading, it's.
Make sure he goes at that during schooltime.
Well, he's already done his his traffic count while school was in.
Right.
Now he's gotta do the rest of it. So he he did his traffic count while school was in session. Grading, yeah, whoever asked the question about grading, we'll, we plan to put the detention required toward the back of the site where it does drop off. And and otherwise, we'll do it just like we do other sites. We'll try to balance it. We normally don't have to bring dirt in. We'll try to balance it and make it work and normal compaction requirements. Anything we fill will be normal compaction requirements, and we'll have a BLE or somebody like that, a soil firm doing testing for that if we need it.
So would that include the possibility of testing the soil as well for any kind of, I don't know that you would call it contaminants, trash that may have been dumped there at any some point in time in the past?
I guess once we get past this stage and I'll walk the site, if it looks like there's been trash dumped, or if you guys tell me there's been trash been dumped on there, we'll definitely take a look at that. But be honest with you, we hadn't got to that point yet where we're doing any detailed looking, walking on the site. But normally, we don't do that. But if there's any indication that there's been trash being dumped, we'll, we'll have to take a look at it. But I will say one other thing. There is a small stream. Our wetland folks, when they go out there, they'll take a look at any anything like that, too, if there's been some problems on the site in the past. They they let us know that also.
Is that, I knew there was a ditch down there. Is there active water in that ditch?
There's one blue line stream, and that's the one we'll get our wetland consultant. Again, once we get past this stage, we'll get her involved and she'll look at it and delineate it if it is a wetland. And normally, just about any creek you see nowadays is a wetland. If you see a little ditch with water in it, it's a wetland. But we'll, we'll have that report done also.
We are moving towards the end of the meeting. We do have an executive session. If you don't mind, if you'll stay to the end of the meeting, we'll meet between the end of the meeting and the executive session very briefly, if you don't mind staying just a little bit longer, okay?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of the engineer?
Is there any particular reason you chose Chandler off of, instead of the other road, Memorial?
Just really the ease of access, not as much traffic, et cetera. And we'll look at it in more detail. We just, you know, this is a preliminary site plan, and and we'll, we'll go out there and check site distances, and we'll get the traffic study, and we'll have all that. But that's our intent right now, anyway.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a challenging site. I mean, it just doesn't lay very well.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I look forward to seeing what you could do with it and how you're gonna terrace it or, I mean, I understand what you're trying to accomplish and why you choose that for access. I just, I think it's gonna be a tough site to work with.
Right. Good.
Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
And another challenge, too, I'll point out, I dropped, this is not for the engineer, but I drop my son off at school in the mornings and I drive on Chandler. And we, our goal each day is to try to beat the bus. Because if the bus gets in front of us, they stop in front of the apartment complex, which is right around the corner, and then they stop traffic for, you know, at least five to 10 minutes. If a kid's running late, it's 10 minutes. And so what inevitably happens is the traffic starts stacking up and backing up down Chandler Road, and then it hits Memorial Drive Extension and causes a traffic nightmare up there. And there's been a lot of accidents and different things like that. And I suspect they're gonna have to do some consideration for routing buses and different things like that in the morning because there are a lot of cars traveling on that road. And and I imagine they'll be trying to drop off kids and bus stops and different things like that. So I hope that those things will be considered and factored in, too.
Certainly, if this rezoning is approved and this project does move forward, it will have to go through Planning Advisory Committee. And I'll certainly make a note of that and bring it up with Skip from the school district to see if there's anything that they could do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And how many unit, did you say a number?
I believe they're planning on 82. But again, this is very preliminary. They wanted to get through the entitlement for the zoning first, and then they'll have to go forward with a special exception, which will have a site plan.
And what was the distinction on, you remember we talked about with multifamily zoning and for an apartment specifically? Have they already gone through that process?
No. So the first step is to get it rezoned from C3 to RM2. Again, the two pieces that it's adjacent to that is part of the project are already RM2. But apartments, which in our ordinance is called group residential, is only allowed by special exception in RM1 and RM2. So first step is to get this piece rezoned. And if that happens, then they will move forward with a special exception for all three parcels. And then if that occurs, then they would be able to move forward with Planning Advisory Committee and full civil plans for the site development. And again, at that point, a traffic study would be required. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Others?
And we will require the traffic study, right?
Yes, mm-hmm.
I have a motion in a second. Do I know if we're in discussion park? Thank you, ma'am. With that then, questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Council, first reading ordinance number 76-2022. This is an ordinance provided to the annexation of certain properties owned by Thomas Gaskin located on Old Jones Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I1 for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. This is an annexation request for three parcels. They are highlighted in red here. One is at the intersection of Old Jones Road and Apner Creek Road, and the other two are off of Old Jones Road. These are adjacent to Project Apollo Becknell that we discussed earlier this evening. So they are requesting I1 zoning. This is the future land use map. It is designated as mixed employment. These are current street views of the site. And Planning Commission with annexations holds the public hearing after first reading. So they will be holding that public hearing next Monday night. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? You willing to answer questions if we have any?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. First reading of number 76-2020, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Council, finally, item of new business for this year is the first reading of ordinance number 77-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of a certain property owned by Greg Schreck located at 319 Morrow Street from RM12 to C3. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, thank you. This is a rezoning request for a portion of a property. It's very small, .08 acres. This is on Morrow Road. The major corridor that you see to the north is obviously Wade Hampton. It's my understanding that that C3 portion, the fuchsia, the pink that is to the north of this R12 property, in order to have a more viable site to build commercial along that Wade Hampton frontage, they needed a little bit more space for parking and some grade issues. And so they have agreed to a purchase with with that property that is currently zoned R12. Based on the survey, the resulting lot, if this is approved and then subdivided, it does still meet the standards for R12 zoning, the minimum square footage of the lot, as well as the 30-foot lot frontage. So it would still meet that, but it would be combined with that property to the north. Future land use map, this is kind of right on the cusp between traditional neighborhood and suburban commercial. And then this is a copy of And then this is a copy of the survey showing the small portion that would ultimately be combined with parcel B that you see on the screen. And as you can see, there is an existing single-family home on that adjacent lot, and that lot would still meet the standards for R twelve. Of course, if and when that C three property got developed, we do have screening standards for any commercial that abuts residential. So that whole kind of strip of the red would have to be screened appropriately at that point. Here is a current street view of the property. And then Planning Commission did have a public hearing on November twenty-first and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record will indicate, no one indicated. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance Number 77-2022.
So moved.
Check. Motion and a second. Floor's open for discussion.
I'm just looking at the aerial view of this. That tip of that triangle, I mean, it's within inches of the side of that pool. It's really close. I don't...
Technically, we allow pool that can be five-foot setback. So the pool has to be five foot, but the concrete patio does not have to be...
It's the same as a driveway, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So the structure setback is like five feet? Or the pool?
Pool, yes.
What about the structure?
Structure is, the primary structure is ten percent of the lot width or a minimum of five. And then again, pool is five. Or an accessory structure is also five.
So I guess the seven-point-three feet is enough?
Yes.
Well, given the topography of that lot, we know where they can take the dirt because it can go right around the corner to that other project. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Counsel and executive session this evening. We had one contractual matter to attend to. I'll entertain a motion that that be done.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss contractual matters pertaining to Project Keystone as allowed by state statute, Section thirty-four seventy-eight-two.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Counsel, we'll stay in this room for the executive session. We'll take a short break between this meeting and executive session to allow those to leave the room and for others. Christmas party and grand openings and all kinds of stuff.
Good for you.
Counsel, in an executive session, we've considered one contractual matter allowed by state law. I'll entertain a motion to come out of this executive session.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Mr. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Counsel, any further business before we adjourn this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize our city administrator to begin contract negotiations as part of Project Keystone.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Mr. Schinkel?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Tanner?
Yes. Counsel? We stand adjourned. Have a happy holiday.